Welcome everyone to Weaver County Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 12th. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bollos. I'm joined by Commissioner Jim Harvey and Commissioner Gage Fror. We will invite the audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, our invocation will be offered by Craig Brandt. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this beautiful day. We're grateful for this special day that we have to celebrate the freedoms that we have and the voice that we carry as citizens. We pray that the elections will be watched over, that those who are working to make sure that they are done fairly will be blessed, and that those who are voting will be able to vote their conscience. We thank thee for this wonderful way that we have to live and to express our freedoms and express our voice and our choice that we have in this land. And we thank thee for this county family in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Item D on our agenda, Commissioner comments. Commissioners, anything to share?
Well, I think it'd be remiss if we didn't recognize the great Weaver County Fair we just ended last Saturday evening. And speaking from a personal note, I think this is my seventh fair as a commissioner. And I'd have to say, probably one of the best. I think everybody had a good time. Weather was perfect on Friday and Saturday. That really helped. And again, the people out there, the staff, everybody at the Golden Spike did a fantastic job in Commissioner Harvey's portfolio, making sure that the public was well served. So, a great event. If you missed it, see you next year.
You've got a year to prepare. Commissioner Harvey?
With that along, I'd probably just want to tell that whole group in Culture Parks and Recreation, the fair bleeds over into everything. It's the county celebration. Wonderful experience. And the field this year was certainly different, better. It was really, it's a very, it's a great family fun, safe fair. And just, they did a wonderful job. I'm just super proud of them. And then also, I want to remind folks that for the municipalities, a lot of the municipalities, they'll voting today, isn't that Ricky?
Right.
Today. And by eight o'clock, voting's available here in this building and other places. But, good luck with your decisions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And one other thing, Annie closed last weekend. That's also in Commissioner Harvey's portfolio. It was an amazing show, and my family really enjoyed that. It was one of the best I've seen over there. So, it was, they did a great job. Okay, item E on our agenda is public comments. Comments will be taken for any item that's listed on the agenda. And we ask that anyone who comes forward, please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to item F, consent items. Number one, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $101,889.81. Number two, requests for approval of warrants, numbers 105657 through 105718 and 492380 through 492470 in the amount of $648,992.36. For summary of warrants and purchase orders, Mr. Ricky Hatch, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We issued 13 purchase orders this week for just over $100,000. Fifty-seven percent of that amount, or $58,000, was for the Health Department to purchase vaccines. Fourteen percent, or $15,000, is for the Sheriff to purchase a drone. Eleven percent, or $11,000, is for IT to purchase software and hardware maintenance. As far as checks, we issued 153 warrants this week for a total amount of $650,000. Twenty-one percent of that amount, or $139,000, is escrow release for Buffalo Run subdivision. Twelve percent, or $76,000, is insurance for dental, disability, and vision for county employees. Eleven percent, or $71,000, is for the Roads Department to pay for asphalt and some equipment maintenance. Nine percent, $62,000, is for the Golden Spike Event Center, and that will pay, has paid for asphalt, concrete, and a tartar gate. Eight percent, or $50,000, is for the Health Department, and that is for grant-funded repairs as well as the Healthy Homes program expenses and utilities. And seven percent, or $44,000, is for the library to pay for utilities, building maintenance, books and materials, software, and the summer programming. The top five vendors that we paid this week are Staker &amp; Parson Companies at $105,000, Single Tree Acres for $100,000, Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, $55,000, Michael Moyal, $34,000, and Baker Tilly Advisory Group, $30,000.
Any questions?
None for me.
No.
Okay, thank you. Item four, requests for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on June 24th, 2025. Number five, requests for approval of ACH payment to Zions Bank in the amount of $309,713.39. Number six, requests for approval of a purchase agreement by and between Weaver County and JM North LLC, Series Two, for an easement to facilitate project improvements along the road to Cozy. Number seven, requests for approval of a purchase agreement by and between Weaver County and Feeny Family LC for an easement to facilitate project improvements along the road to Cozy Reservoir. Commissioners, if there are any comments or questions, ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve those consent items as presented today, F's one through, including seven. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G, action items. Number one, request for approval of Resolution 34-2025 of the county commissioners of Weaver County appointing a trustee to the Board of the Ogden Valley Recreation Transmission Special Service District, Ms. Stacy Skeen.
Good morning. I received a notice from the Ogden Valley TV District that one of their members had moved out of state, so it created a midterm vacancy. And I posted for the vacancy and received one application prior to the deadline. He is, you have the application before you, and he is qualified to serve. So, I'm just asking for your approval to appoint him to fill the remainder position until December of 2026.
Madam Chair?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we approve of Resolution 34-2025, appointing Bart Brager to the Ogden Valley Recreation Transmission Special Service District Board.
And I'll second that with a comment.
Please.
And if you'll notice, Commissioners, there's four people currently on this board. It's been a fairly difficult one over the years to fill. But, we may want to address sometime in the near future moving this board to a five-member board. Just, again, four members sometimes can be problematic because of votes taken. So, just to suggest, and we look at that, but I'll second that motion.
And did you, did you name the resolution? Your motion, I can't remember. Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for Resolution 34-2025. Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bollos?
Aye, thank you, carries. Thank you. Number two, requests for approval of a first reading of an ordinance of the county commissioners of Weaver County to change the name of a private road within unincorporated areas of Weaver County. Mr. Steve Collier, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time. Let me get the agenda out of the way here. So, this is, again, the first reading for simply changing the name of a private lane. The change would be from Babalus Lane to Spring Creek Lane and keeping the same coordinate value in that name. That's 6125 South. And that's just as has been requested by those that access from that lane.
Any questions?
Is that unanimous by those who live on that said lane?
That is what I'm told. I've asked for a letter for the second reading for us to be able to present that if requested. And there's the nod that yes, that is unanimous.
Well, I know where that came from.
So, there are three lots on there. I think two different owners.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve that first reading as presented by Mr. Collier this morning.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, requests for approval of Resolution 35-2025 of the county commissioners of Weaver County approving a second amendment to the governing document of Promontory Commerce Center Public Infrastructure Districts, numbers one, two, and three, to amend the annexation area of the districts and related matters. Ms. Stephanie Russell, welcome.
Commissioners, thank you for entertaining this resolution. Promontory PAD Board of Trustees met on the 22nd of July of this year, and they adopted a resolution 2025-1. This is a second amendment to the governing document of this particular public infrastructure district that was created by the county in June of 2023. This amendment is addressing the annexation area. This is properties that are east of the existing PID. This is the first step in this process. The second process would be to submit a petition that would ratify those annexed properties, verifying that all of the property owners have agreed to participate in the public infrastructure district. Public infrastructure districts require 100% participation of property owners in order for them to be a part of that district. So, we're just asking for the commission to pass this resolution, which would allow Promontory Commerce Center PID to move on to the next step, which is the petition.
Any questions?
No questions. I'm happy to make a motion when you're ready.
Please.
So, I'd move resolution, approval of Resolution 35-2025 as presented by Ms. Stephanie Russell this morning.
Second?
I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for Resolution 35-2025. Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Number four, request for approval of a contract by and between Weaver County and TGE Inc., DBA Gardner Engineering for the 2550 South roadway design project. Ashley Tolman, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you is a contract between Weaver County and Gardner Engineering, or TGE Inc., to help us finish the design of 2550 South, to widen that road and prepare the construction documents. This includes Phase One, which would be 3500 West to 4300 West. And then in the contract, we also added preliminary design for Phase Two, which would be 4300 West to 4700 West, kind of prepping that. We don't have all the construction money yet for Phase Two, but to try and have that ready in case we have developments that come in that need to do improvements along there. We would know what elevations to put that in. This is a project that's funded through WACOG funds, through sales tax, and also through impact fees to help with our local match. That will help pay for the design and then also the construction. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
None for me.
I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve that contract between Weaver County and TGE Inc. as presented by Mr. Tolman this morning.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, request for approval of a contract by and between Weaver County and Skills Unlimited Inc. for installation of general waste MBI outbound ramp at the Weaver County Transfer Station. Bill Ross?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is just, many of you know, out of the transfer station. At the south end of our tipping floor is where we load all of our MBI trucks, double-pole trailers that haul our municipal waste away. On that huge scale, on the outbound side of that, it was originally constructed out of wood material, and over the years, it's just deteriorated and starting to fail. So, we need to replace that. And so, this is a contract with Skills Unlimited to do that work and make it safe and back in good working order. So, any questions?
No, I said, boy, I'll tell you, the process by which we operate out there has really elevated, and it's been phenomenal. You and your team have done a great job. People who had, and rightfully so, I mean, I've been out there and waited in the past as well, for a long time. It can be tough. We can't do anything about the train, but we've done everything else about the inside of that place. And, boy, Commissioner Fror, I know this is in your portfolio, great job out there.
Good team out there. Happy to make a motion whenever you're ready.
Ready.
So, Madam Chair, I'd move approval of the contract by and between Weaver County and Skills Unlimited Inc. for the installation of the general waste MBI outbound ramp at the Weaver County Transfer Station, as presented this morning by Mr. Bill Ross. And just to second that, Sean, Bill, and that whole group out there, John Watson, have done a great job making sure that we continue to offer the best transfer station in northern Utah.
That's the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Number six, request for approval of contract by and between Weaver County and Grant Morrison for indigent defense in specialty cases. Sir Jim Ratalick, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is regarding, I didn't call you your honor yet today, so, this is to approve the contract. At present, Bill Morrison works a contract as a specialty attorney. Specialty attorneys, we have two of them, and they handle the most serious cases that we find, all homicide cases, all first-degree sex offense cases. And they had been operating under the same contract since, I think, 2018. And so, this simply increases the hourly from 125 an hour to 140 an hour. There's still the cap on the total amount that we allow through, from the contracts that we receive from IDC, the funds we receive, which we'll address here in just a second. But, this was a long time overdue.
Any questions?
None for me.
Ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the contract by and between Weaver County and Grant Morrison for the IDG Indigent Defense Specialty Cases as presented by Mr. Jim Ratalick this morning.
Madam Chair, instead of the second, I'd like to hold if we could. I'd like to hear the last item he's got with the state before we go ahead on this one, just a matter of...
Actually, it'd be the next item. Yeah.
Could we just hold this for just a minute? Because I think that I'd like to hear the, it may answer my question that I have on this. That's up to you.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead and present number seven.
All right, thank you. This is the grant contract between Weaver County and the Indigent Defense Commission for the state of Utah. The IDC contract is the same amount as it was previously last year, just under $1 million in connection with that last contract for Grant Morrison. We receive $70,000 for each one of our specialty attorneys, so, for a total of $140,000. Once again, those specialty contracts take a load off the line attorneys of handling the most serious types of cases. And so, we're just under, just, I think, just a few thousand dollars, under $1 million that we're receiving from the state of Utah, which makes the operation of our office possible.
Commissioner Harvey, you okay to go back to number six now for the second?
Yeah, that'd be fine, thank you. Madam Chair, after hearing item number seven, my concern is, and Mr. Ratalick, you do a great job. This is no reflection on you. And I hope Mr. Barazza down at the state, they hear that the gap is still widening. This debt, or this extra pay for any of them, and not that they're not qualified, is going to fall on the property tax of the taxpayers of Weaver County. This gap cannot continue to widen. This is, to me, as we, rightfully so, should pay a little more to our guys, it's just that the burden is on the taxpayer of Weaver County. We have to see more out of the state. We have to see more. It's not a "may," it's a "shall." We have to have them pay more, or we may have to make some drastic decisions come budget time. So, as it relates, going back to that item, I know that it must, you wouldn't present it if it shouldn't be so, but I'll second that, but with a heavy concern that the gap continues to widen, and that could cause other problems coming down the road.
Well, and I might add that the IDC fights mightily for every dime that they receive from the state of Utah, so that they can provide these grants. Last year, they took about a $700,000 hit, yet they saw fit to dive into emergency funds that they had to continue to fund everything and all the programs that they have funded here in Weaver County.
And while I respect that, they've just got to maybe quit throwing ninja stars and pull out the nunchucks. I don't know, they may have to use a different tool, but we've got, it doesn't, that's fine, and I understand that, but all of us, especially involved in that, should be talking to our legislators. They can't cut that funding. We have to, we have to continue to fund those positions and not widen the gap of funding which falls on the taxpayers. So, that's, I hear what you're saying. I understand that. I think that's what they should have done, but that's my concern.
Well, and constitutionally, the response, the responsibility falls on the state, as does the burden under the Gideon versus Wainwright decision from 1963, said that it is a state requirement. And all the states basically did was make it a, an unfunded mandate to the counties. And so, I agree with you. But, I think the fact that we're getting almost $1 million from the state for this, while not sufficient, not to cover everything that we need to cover, I think we're on the right track.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. On the contract between Weaver County and Grant Morrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then item seven, which was presented as approval of a contract by and between Weaver County and the state of Utah Indigent Defense Commission to operate indigent defense for Weaver County District and Juvenile Courts and the Regional Forensic Social Work Office within the Public Defense Office. Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve that contract as presented by Mr. Ratalick.
And I'll second that with a comment. And Commissioner Harvey is spot-on in terms of the relationship we have with the state of Utah. Actually, one of my previous duties, I actually funded the Indigent Defense Commission in one of the committees I ran. And quite frankly, it's not the best, it never has been, the best-funded commission in the state of Utah. We need to change that. I think we've proven, I think Mr. Ratalick's proven over the last few years, that the public defenders has done a great benefit, not only for Weaver County, but the state of Utah, with the Veterans Court and what he's been able to accomplish for our citizens. It's well-proven. At the same time, we need to put pressure, and you're exactly right, the pressure has to come from our local legislators, that we need more funding through appropriations to make this affordable for the county. I'll maybe just put it that way. And I, so I don't disagree with the word you said, I think, but again, I don't want Mr. Ratalick or his office to feel this is a criticism of his, because I think it's been proven throughout the state, we are recognized as a leader in public defense. And again, what we, I think the public needs to understand, if we didn't do this, we would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ratalick, is that then it'd be, we'd go back to our contract form of public defenders. And at times, especially when we have capital cases, the costs can come very close to what we're spending now. So, I mean, we just have to look at the dollars and cents. But, the bottom line is, we need more money from the state. So, I'm not going to disagree with that for a minute.
I agree. I agree. Okay, I have a motion and a second on this contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And number eight, request for approval of a memorandum of agreement by and between Weaver County and the state of Utah Indigent Defense Commission to provide Title IV-E federal funding for allowable administrative costs for attorneys to provide legal representation to parents of children who are candidates for Title IV-E foster care or Title IV-E eligible foster care.
Thank you. This is a great benefit to the citizenry of Weaver County. Title IV-E provides federal funding. And so, we have our, and actually, they're operating on separate contracts. We have some of our juvenile attorneys who have a great deal of experience in this, can go ahead and contract and bill on these types of cases. And Weaver County receives reimbursement of those funds that Weaver County pays out for those representations. Great benefit to the citizens, great benefit to the children that the program serves.
Any questions?
None for me.
Ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve the memorandum of agreement by and between Weaver County and the state of Utah Indigent Defense Commission to provide the Title 1V-E, Title IV, federal funding for allowable administrative costs for attorneys to provide legal representation for parents of children who are candidates for Title IV-E foster care or Title IV-E eligible foster care, as presented by Mr. Ratalick this morning.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item H on our agenda, public hearings. Number one, request for motion to adjourn public meeting and convene public hearings.
So, move?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're now in a public hearing for item two. Regarding a proposed ordinance and development agreement, the ordinance will create a new zone district called the Traditional Neighborhood, or TN Zone, and will rezone approximately 550 acres of property located within the area bounded by 12th Street, 4700 West, and the Weaver River. The associated development agreement is related to a request for approval of the Bennett Development, formerly Gibson Farms, a master plan development comprising the same 550 acres. The TN Zone will allow a variety of uses with the master plan development, guided by a concept plan and design standards, including single-family residential, mixed residential, and mixed neighborhood commercial. Mr. Charlie Urt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that description gave my presentation, so I'll take any questions.
All righty, I'm ready for it.
Just kidding. No, thank you very much. I've got a slideshow, I can make as long or as quick as you guys want, just want to go over the higher-arching points. This is one of the bigger projects we've been working on. You guys know that we discussed another big one in last week's meeting. This one's kind of following closely on the hills. This is about 550-acre piece of property. The applicant is asking for a new zone that they have proposed. They are calling it the Traditional Neighborhood, the TN Zone. And as part of that, they're asking for essentially three things, the creation of that zone, so the final adoption of the zone, and then rezoning 550 acres to that zone, and then approving a development agreement. Let's see if I can get that into... Don't mess with it too much. The Traditional Neighborhood Zone, as it's proposed, is a type of form-based zone. It's a form-based zone that is unique to each development type. In order to have a property rezoned to this particular form-based zone, the way that it's written suggests that the property would need to be at least 400 acres, be a master planned community, and come with a development agreement. So, prior to ever rezoning property to the TN Zone, we should see a development agreement that you guys are comfortable with and are willing to approve. What this will do, it's basically creation of the TN Zone is, it's more like an enabling zone. Once you have a property that you want to rezone to the TN Zone, it will have its own unique name. So, this property, the 550 acres, will be termed the TN-Bennett Zone, is what the proposal is. If you have another 400-acre property that comes in to be master planned, wants to go in the TN Zone, it would be TN-whatever they are calling their development. This type of zone, the form-based zone, it has subzones called transects. In the, our existing form-based code that we already have in adoption, we call these, instead of transects, we call them street types. But, essentially, they're the same thing, basically looking at how to create the form of a community based off of a transect type. It focuses on the difference between the public realm and the private realm. Public realm was the thing that needs to be, that needs to look good for the community, that it really defines community, it builds community. And in the private realm, that's inside buildings, backyards, et cetera, and that's the sort of thing that the, there's much less governing or much less regulation on. Transects, you can kind of see here the split between one side, which is just natural, and the other side, which is, what do you call them, town center or special district as well. So, you can just see how the intensity of development ramps up based on transects. So, that's the TN Zone. This is the subject property to potentially be rezoned to the TN Zone. Current zone map is on the left-hand side, the proposed zone map is on the right-hand side there, calling it the TN-Bennett Zone. So, right now, on the left-hand side, you've got the A2 Zone, the A1 Zone, and just a little bit of the R115 and the R3 Zone. R115 and the R3 Zone in this project right here, which was approved last year as Windmill West.
Say that again, Charlie, one more time. We'll sign, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Which part? All of it?
What you just did, recircle that piece, because that's...
So that piece right there is the Windmill West development. There is a development agreement on it right now that governs how it's supposed to be built, with the R3 Zone up next to 4700 West and the R115 Zone back in the back. I don't know if you recall this one from probably a year and a half ago or so. The applicant has acquired that property and they're proposing to do away with that development agreement and those zones and put it all into the TN Zone with their development agreement. Just a bigger, bigger image of Just give you a little recap on what we've seen so far. The process that has led into this has generated, let me do a quick count, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 different public meetings. These meetings were mostly in the form of a work session with the Planning Commission, but there was also a public hearing with the Planning Commission. This public hearing today with you guys, as well as several work sessions with you guys. In fact, I think there's two or three more meetings that we met specifically with you guys to discuss some of these items as well, that aren't, is not showing on this calendar here. So, quite a bit of public discourse that has gone on in the creation of this over the last year. When you're looking at rezoned considerations, the code suggests you look at the following six items: consistency with the general plan, compatibility with existing development, impact on adjacent properties, adequacy of facilities and services, environmental considerations, and traffic mitigation. And I'm not going to go into, what's the word, big detail on each of those items. I'll just kind of run you through each of them quickly. Most important one, I think, is the general plan consistency. We know the general plan talks about medium-to-large residential lots, talks about mixed-use residential and missing-middle housing, and master plan communities. When it comes to master plan communities, the general plan favors that because it stimulates cohesion and integration of development facilities and services. It provides an economy of scale, and it better facilitates the creation of communities that are designed for all stages of life. The image on the left-hand side, that is the general plan. That general plan is not formally in effect, but it has been adopted and approved by you guys, contingent on it going into effect if this rezone is granted. So, on the left-hand side is that future land use map as it applies to the property. And on the right-hand side is the development plan. Those are the transect districts. And you can see from the lighter shading to the darker shading of pink or purple, or whatever color that is. That's where you've got, the lighter shading is lighter intensity uses, the lighter transects, and the darker shading is the heavier, more robust transects. And then that yellow is a special district intended for the future of agritourism use, which the agritourism use that's currently on the property, I think, will probably continue on for some time. This image depicts a concept map of what the project could look like. We say could look like, because there's a lot of flexibility and movement of these roads and the use types as long as whatever that is falls back to whatever this transect district map shows, generally speaking. But we do know, looking at the next slide here, we do know that the general plan calls for certain street rights of way that are bigger than just this community, more important than just this community, important to the overall community. East-west connections across the river, north-south connections to the south side of the railroad tracks, as well as east-west on the northern side. Kind of hard to see right here, but where are we? There we go. 700 north. We want to make sure that we get some good connections there. And the applicant has proposed all of those. Applicant is also proposing improvements along the Weaver River. So this is the Emerald Necklace that's in the general plan, talks about using the Weaver River as the creation of that necklace. And the Emeralds are the parks that will be located along that necklace there. With that in mind, you guys have a lot more details than what I've just given you. You've got basically three options, or some combination of the three options on these three items. In your packet, you've got an ordinance. The ordinance will both, if you were to approve it, it will adopt the TN Zone, and it will apply the TN Zone to this property, subject property that we're talking about. It'll also authorize the chair to sign the development agreement that's included in the packet. There is one item in the development agreement that we're not quite done on, and it's just an administrative thing, where the development agreement and the zone is intended to govern design better than what our current zones do. The applicant has requested that some of our design standards that are already adopted in our codes be loosened or relieved a little bit, because they're going to, they're going to have to have a whole town architect and the whole process to verify compatibility with the design. And there's a whole governing structure on how the county can control that process. And so, they're asking for a little bit of relief on design standards that are in our existing code. We're going back and forth a little bit on that, because there are some things that we know we definitely want to see governed, but I think they would like us to accept, exempt them from. But between our attorneys and myself and them, I think we can have that worked out pretty easily before the agreement is signed. So I don't see that as anything more than just administrative cleanup before recordation. Any questions for me on any of that?
Commissioners, do you want to hold your questions till after the public hearing?
I'm happy, whatever you'd like, Madam Chair.
Let's go to public comment.
Madam Chair, I know the applicant wanted to address you guys as well, whenever you're ready for that.
Okay. Let's go to public comment first. If there's anyone in the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue, let's have them come forward now. I know that we've opened up emails as a means of public comment for these public hearings, and I haven't received any, Commissioners. I don't know if you've received any you want to address.
Haven't.
Okay. Seeing none?
I just want to recognize the Planning Commission Chair, Mr. Andrew Fivero, in the audience. Thank you for being here. Not that you haven't donated enough time, but appreciate you coming in the middle of the day to hear this. Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, let's entertain a motion to leave the public hearing and reconvene our public meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're now back in a public meeting. I know the developers here, Commissioners, I don't know if you want to hear from them, and we'll go with the questions later.
I'm happy to hear from them if they'd like.
Good morning.
You're going to get a fresh face today. So, first off, we wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today. And Charlie hit on most of the timeline and process, but I'm welcome to answer any questions you have on community engagement or anything related to that. But I felt like today, maybe it was more important to give you an overview of what we're asking and trying to create on this property. So, I'll go into that, but you're welcome to ask any questions at any time. So, the overview of today, I wanted to hit on the key components of everything. So, today, we're here to create something more than just your average subdivision. We have a chance to create a neighborhood that serves families. Families that are just starting out, parents in the middle of life, and seniors who want to stay connected to the place that they love here. It is about creating a community that will be just as vibrant in 50 years as it is with the day it's built. We want to create a complete neighborhood, one that follows these principles: staying connected, that streets and paths encourage walking, biking, and daily interaction. One that is balanced, a mixed type of housing, shops, services, and green space. One that is self-sustaining, where your daily needs are met within close proximity to home. One that is safe and inviting, designed for beauty, comfort, and a sense of pride. This is a place for all ages and stages. Young families that want to enjoy safe and walkable streets. Professionals that value proximity to the amenities. And empty nesters and retirees that can stay active and connected to the community. A key component of our project is senior-friendly housing. From the market study that we did over all this whole project, we anticipate a large portion of our buyers will be empty nesters and retirees of all products, not just single-family. This allows them to have accessible, single-level housing, spaces designed for aging in place, goods and services within a pleasant walking distance, parks and trails, and gathering spots that reduce isolation as they age. This project, at its core, values homeownership. A fundamental goal of our traditional neighborhood development is built around homeownership. We plan for balance, not just rentals. While some rentals are important to the inclusivity of this neighborhood, it is important to have a strong base of homeownership that creates the stability and investment that a neighborhood thrives off of. This also creates long-term stewardship in this project. Homeowners take care of their properties, they strengthen neighborhood character, and they engage in the neighborhood and civic life. If you were to ask why a traditional neighborhood development works, I would tell you this. It has proven to create vibrant, resilient communities. It encourages social connection and healthy lifestyles. It increases property values and long-term tax revenue. And it uses land and infrastructure more efficiently. Today, we have the opportunity to set the standard for thoughtful growth in Weaver County. It is not just building homes, it is building community. It is a place where kids grow up, parents build their futures, and seniors remain part of the neighborhood that they love. It is how we preserve the best of Weaver County while still preparing for the future. That is the overview of the whole project. I'm happy to answer any detailed questions, though, but that gives you the basis of what we're trying to accomplish.
Any questions at this point?
One question. So, can you tell me the density? How many residential units?
In the development agreement, it's six units per acre.
Okay.
That is what's written in there.
Yeah, okay.
That's it for right now. We have later.
I appreciate you, your presentation. I appreciate that, you know, I have a fairly big concern about senior living, and you covered that. But I also, having seen some similar projects out in Norton Commons, I like what they do with schools and YMCA's and, and they made places for public, things like little water parks and fire stations and churches. I was impressed with the model that was there. That was a good, that was very good. It covers one of the things I asked for. Mr. Ewer, I want to make sure that we get a little extra frontage off of 4700. I'm not as concerned about 12th Street. Can you address that? Do you, can you address that, please?
Talking about green space on 4700?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so the applicant has put something in the development agreement about an extra buffer, green space buffer along 4700, for all parts of 4700 that isn't intended to have commercial buildings directly front of it, which is most of, most of the project.
We most of that project. What about bridges spanning over the, in or around the Emerald Necklace around in there? What will be the developer's responsibility with that?
Great question. The Planning Commission specifically asked you guys to make sure that we get in at least two pedestrian bridges in addition to the two vehicle bridges that we're planning over time.
Say that again.
So, we'll have two vehicle bridges, one at 700 North and one at 400 South, and then two pedestrian bridges in between those, to make sure that there's plenty of cross, cross-traffic ability over that riverway. That's in the proposal.
Thank you. Anything else?
Unless you guys have anything else for me.
What about the river, the, along the river, minimums, maximums, part of that, again, that Emerald Necklace?
Yeah, so the county code currently says no, nothing shall be close, sorry, my brain's misfiring right now. Nothing shall be close, place closer, thank you, to the river than 300 feet. In the development agreement, we do have the, an exception to that. That can go down to 100 feet. But there's a clause that says, anything within that 100 to 300 feet needs to be studied by an expert. And the development agreement names that expert. So, county's agreeing. We ran that through the engineering office, and they said they're great with that. And so, the county and the developer are agreeing on who that expert is, at least on the front end. It can change later with consent of all. But within that 200-foot buffer, there is a requirement for certain scientific measures to be met.
We know, Madam Chair, we know that there are places, because of Mr. Wilkinson on our staff and some of the others, we know that there can be problematic places along that river. If a concession is made, if a concession is made to be able to, to reduce to down to 100, I would like to make sure that there is, there is the roadway access from 4700 or 12th Street, and I know there will already be a road, 4700 or 12th Street, so that they can get in with a long reach even, or whatever equipment's necessary to be, to be able to access that part of the river without having to drive all the way from 12th, all the way back along there to be able to get to where we need to and destroy the hole. See what I'm saying? Because those pieces of equipment are heavy. So, I hadn't thought about that until today, but I, that needs, listen, that's super critical.
Yep.
That's about maintaining, that's about maintaining for the future.
Yep, agreed.
That may not affect this development, but I don't want to negatively impact other developments that may exist on the other side of the river. And I can think of one, especially right now. We've got to be able to access that still.
Yep, makes perfect sense. Planning Commission had the same concern. We made sure we got that in the development agreement.
That's great. What was the Planning Commission's response to this, Mr. Ewer?
It was unanimous consent, or unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay. Madam Chair, that completes my questions.
Okay, I have a few more that haven't been covered. Charlie, we talked about this a little earlier today, but just for the sake of the other Commissioners, so they can hear the response to my question. Will you explain the difference between today's agenda item and last week's agenda item, to the point that we are talking about creating city centers well ahead of the development, which I think is a really smart idea. And so, it seems as though we're creating two different city centers with these two proposed developments.
Yeah, happy to answer that. In fact, after you and I discussed, I recalled something that we're working on with Wasatch Front Regional Council. So, the Wasatch Front Regional Council is, as part of the regional transportation plan, wanting to work with each community on identifying where their economic nodes or their commercial nodes are. And they're categorizing those nodes into things like urban centers, city centers, neighborhood, commercial, employment centers. And they're kind of stratifying it based off of intensive uses, like downtown Ogden would be an urban center, whereas some of the periphery of downtown Ogden would be a community center. If you look at some of the pockets in the neighborhoods where you've got intersections with commercial uses right on the corners of those intersections, those might be neighborhood supportive uses. If you look at it through that lens, we reported the possibility, again, it's not final, but the possibility of last week's project having a pretty decent urban center. So, something that may not have skyscrapers or, you know, bigger, taller buildings like we see here in downtown Ogden, but something that has a number of 25th Streets. So, it's an urban core that serves that community out there, especially with the amount of density that they are proposing out there. This project is not proposing as much density, and they are looking at doing neighborhood centers, not commercial or urban centers. So, does that answer that question, or would you like me to go into detail a little more on that?
Nope, that's great. Because we had nobody speak in today's public hearing, will you just briefly review the comments that were made in opposition to this?
At the public hearing?
At the public hearing.
I'm going to have to ask the chair. I don't recall...
Just, I just want to hear the general, I mean, I've heard him. I guess I want the public... I guess I want the public to hear the general comments that were made against this.
Remember, there were three specific ones. One primary concern was that we shouldn't be calling this a traditional neighborhood zone, because traditional neighborhoods are straight streets on a grid pattern. I don't know that my profession would totally agree with that. We do have the beautiful Plate of Zion that has shaped most of the communities here on the Wasatch Front, as well as others across the Intermountain West, that does have straight streets with blocks that are 660 feet apart. But there are other projects, you know, around the world frankly, that has great street connectivity with great street blocks that are a little bit more neighborhood traditional. The straight streets you'll find over time really helped vehicle connectivity. Some of the lesser straight streets, curvilinear streets, they help actually promote pedestrian connectivity and pedestrianism, giving people better and faster connections by foot than necessarily by car. And so it actually helps what is truly a traditional neighborhood, which is, you know, if you go pre-vehicle, you can see some of these older cities, you know, Boston or New York or whatever, that don't necessarily have the perfect grid pattern. So that's kind of the traditional style they're looking at. When I say Boston, New York, I don't mean the urban density of that, just the way that those streets were shaped and laid out organically from the beginning.
Any other concerns, other than the definition of a traditional neighborhood?
Yeah, and I think that's primarily regarding straight versus curvilinear, yeah. So some folks would rather not see the curves in the road. Curves can cause some challenges, especially when it's related to speed, but also same comment, curvilinear versus straight grid pattern. You had that, you had a little bit of concern about the western side of the river and some of these roads, where they're gonna go. Right now, the development agreement doesn't specify when some of those vehicle bridges need to be built, or should be built, or how they're going to be built. We do specify how the pedestrian bridges will be built, but not the vehicle bridges, mostly because we don't have control over the other side of the river, and because the majority of the traffic load coming to and from this project is gonna be coming from the east, not the west. So as the west side of the river builds out, we'll be looking at finding ways to build and fund those bridges. But one landowner said, I'd really rather not have a road going through our family's property. Actually, had some conversations with other members of the family subsequent to that, and we're exploring opportunities for maybe some, maybe an open space area or a nature park area or something like that for their property, where we would still have good street connections, but preserve most of their property the way that they would like to keep it. They're not interested in necessarily developing that property, they would rather keep it. I think that was the gist of it. A little bit of safety concerns along the river, just making sure that we do actually do some engineering along that riverway to make sure that it stays where it is and doesn't flood things out. Applicant actually said it best, as the long-term master plan developer over this master plan development, they definitely want to make sure that they're not creating problems for themselves in the future. So I think the market will help govern a lot of that, but I know Gary's gonna have some eyes on with a lot of that as well.
Okay, next. I'm gonna combine a couple of my questions. I don't want to go forever, but when this change was made to the general plan last, I think it was last fall, last fall?
Yeah, December, actually.
Okay, nine-ish months ago. The reason why I voted against that was because I wanted to make sure that the planning commission took whatever this proposed project was and tried to envision it in other places in western Weber County. I like the name of the new zone, Traditional Neighborhood, and I think it's flexible enough to be applied to large tracts of land, like 550 acres, but also to smaller ones, 100 acres. So I really like that. Can you give me an update on the conversations of the planning commission on where else this might, I don't need to know where else it would be applied, but I would really like to see it applied to the general plan in other places.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So as we looked at crafting and shaping the TN zone specifically, we wanted to make sure it wasn't just useful for this one property. As great as this project seems to be, the administration of land use laws can get really complicated if we have super unique things all over the place. And so looking at the idea of making something consistent across the board, I think is important. Right now, where the TN zone says that in order to qualify for TN zone, you have to have a certain amount of acreage, 400 acres, that could be changed at any time. The planning commission and staff talked a lot about how this is just the beginning of the TN zone. And if we do traditional neighborhood correctly, it could be the way that we go with most of our projects going into the future. Something a little bit more, it'd be less development agreement heavy and more, we'd have to put a little bit more substance in the zone itself, but we set it up in a way where we could expand it for the use on other properties to provide a little bit more uniformity and consistency.
I prefer that over creating a new zone for every development that comes in, if you can't tell.
Yeah, agreed.
Consistency is, I think, what it's about when we change the general plan, so that not only the property owners and developers, but the neighboring property owners understand what can happen. And as this, as this development unfolds, I think it will be a good visual for other people in western Weber County to see what might happen next door to them. I think it's an amazing project, and I love the integration. I think that's so important, and it seems like in my lifetime, that hasn't been done very well in most places. There's usually a this side of the tracks and that side of the tracks, or this side of, you know, whatever divider is, I just love the integration of this project, and I think it's really important in development. So I would love to see that zone applied in other places. And also with the extension of legacy up into Weber County, I think it's really important to recognize that these new developments are gonna be located next to major transportation corridor. And while I still think there is plenty of need for large lots and large homes and neighborhoods like we see out west now, I think there's still a need for that. With that large corridor coming through there, there needs to be planning for those people who have fewer cars per household, and those people who want to live in spaces that are more conducive to that kind of transportation. So I really like the placement of this. I think that's it. Did I bring up any other?
My big thing was is that we, when this came before us last fall, I remember that there were concerns. It didn't exactly, it didn't exactly go with our general plan. We asked you to go out to the people, especially along 12th West. You've done that, you've stated all those times, you've been able to reach out to public. I appreciate that. You know, you've done a good job. I want Mr. Grover, thank you for your work on this. You know, I think the only thing we don't know is what we don't know. This is, this represents a big change for us. Nothing like this we've done. But I've done a lot of research, and I'm, you know, I'm about there, so that's my comments.
Anything else, Dad?
Yes, if I could, Madam Chair.
Please.
So I agree with Chair Bolos on, you know, to create a zone for one property, seems a little unusual to me from a planning standpoint. So I've got a couple of questions. Where did the 400 acres come from? If somebody came in with 150 or 200 acres, are we setting ourselves up for potential conflicts by dictating for, why not 1,000 acres? I mean, so tell me where the 400 acres come from, and then I also want some input on, you mentioned the design has not, and I reviewed the development agreement, you said the design has not been agreed to 100%. Is that correct or not correct?
Sort of. Let me answer both of those questions. Did you have any other ones you wanted to ask as well?
Well, I'm gonna ask you a question at the end here, but it doesn't really apply to this directly, but I want to put it on public record, just since you're here, Charlie.
Okay, perfect. So the 400 acres, just a line in the sand? It could be whatever number you wanted. We were trying to figure out, when we drew that line, we were trying to figure out where it belongs in terms of size, what size of property is needed to create a good cohesive master plan development. If and when the future comes, when somebody with 100 acres wants to use this zone and do something similar, I do think we'll want to hopefully have already gotten into the zone and refined it so that there's a lot more consistency. Great thing about this project is it's kind of fleshing out some of the challenges.
Some of our weaknesses.
Some of our own weaknesses, yep. It's given us a great direction on how to address those smaller developments in time. And I've got a booklet that this development agreement is actually based on. It's based on a model form-based zone ordinance called, is it called Smart, Smart Code, yep, Smart Code version nine. And that's created by some people who are much smarter than I am, some famous planners and architects that have done work across the globe, and it speaks directly to, as a uniform ordinance, speaks directly to any kind of development of this type on any size of property. So we have a lot of opportunity in front of us, I think, to refine both our form-based zone, as well as the TN zone as a form-based zone with the planning commission, to make it useful for smaller projects. We just said 400 for now because this property was bigger than that, and we wanted to maybe try and head off some of the smaller properties from coming in thinking that they could just be used.
I think, I know where it came from, out of the air. Okay. Answer my next question on design.
Yeah, so in the development agreement, there is a specific section. It's section 8.17.3. That section talks about exemptions from the county's code, the county's design code. Because the applicant has provided such a thorough design, because theirs is complete, it's a, their design code, their design regulations are very robust, much more robust than ours are, they want to make sure that whatever they have in their design code isn't in conflict with what's in our code. And so we're just going through surgically, it's specifically as it relates to Title 108-7, which is our supplemental and qualifying standards and regulations. We're just going through each of those, saying, this is still applicable, this is not applicable. So things like our architectural styling, our landscaping, our layout setbacks, configuration, stuff like that, would not be applicable to this project because they've already provided something that's by far above and beyond what our code already does, so.
Okay, well, I guess that's my question. I was concerned that we're trying to still negotiate design. So from what I understand, the design that we're seeing in the development agreement aligns very closely to what we've seen over the past number of months. Is that correct?
Design is done. Yep, that hasn't changed since, I don't know, six months ago.
Well, I had some concerns there, but, last question, Charlie. There's been some recent information in the press that Weber County does not require will-serv letters for either water or sewer before we hand stamp a development. I need to have an answer to that, because there has been some press on that, and members of the public in certain parts of this county are saying that we don't require that. Is that true or false, Charlie?
We require will-serv letter for any subdivision application. This is not a subdivision application, this is a master plan development.
Within the entire county?
Well, unincorporated area.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Just within the county boundary, I just want to be clear.
We won't even start subdivision review unless we have will-serv letters for water and sewer.
Whether it's on the west side of the mountains or the east side of the mountains, just try to be, understand.
Yep, correct. For any subdivision application.
Well, that was my question, so.
Okay, now I do.
Sometimes I just, you know, don't know if what I read in print's true, so.
Sometimes it's not. One follow-up comment about the 400 acre, and I know that you said that you'd go back and possibly look at that again. And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to say that if a 100-acre piece came in, we would try to recreate this project, just on a smaller scale, because then you have even more kind of centers, but I think the intent would be, and I assume will be, to make these projects cohesive. So they kind of all mesh together once you drive out there and realize that it was all part of one, you know, thousands of acres.
As you look at the transect graphic that I had up here on the screen, let me get back to it here, just to give you a feel. I would assume most projects outside of these boundaries are probably not gonna get up into the town center, maybe not even, so that's T6, maybe not even the T5 category. Most of the projects that are out there are still gonna be single-family dwellings, but we can do them in a way that is consistent with the T1, T2, T3 cross-sections that you see here. So that's what I mean by consistency. So yes, I think it would work really well.
So it doesn't look like you're jumping from one city to the next by crossing the street?
Right.
Okay, Commissioners, those are my questions. If you have no others, I'm ready for a motion.
Well, I just, Charlie, what assurance can you give me? You're just, you talked a little bit about their development guidelines were more strict than ours. I want, I want you to tell me, not in the record, but even in this whole thing, what, how can we know? I want to know. I mean, well, look, we're at this point because we trust you and the staff, and you guys do a phenomenal job.
Yeah, appreciate that.
You guys really, really do a great job.
I appreciate that.
And but it sounds to me like a little pushed here. I mean, do we just wait until somebody can sit down and go through that Minshener novel you've got there and go through everything, or what?
No, well, I mean, if you did want to sit down and do it, it's all adopted. In fact, you can find most of it in, what do we have here? It's in the exhibits to the development agreement. The county, unincorporated county, we haven't done a lot of commercial development. We haven't done a lot of higher-density development, and so it makes a lot of sense that we don't have a ton of great standards that can help shape those communities. From an ethical perspective, I would have a hard time recommending approval of this if we didn't have something that I felt like we've got a sense of confidence in. If they aren't following the design standards, which are more robust than ours, if they aren't following it, the county has recourse to make sure that they adjust and fix that, including the county can remove the town architect. So the town architect is funded and paid for by the applicant, but we want to make sure we've got full control over the decision-making authority of the town architect. And if they're not following the rules, they can be removed. So I know it's not directly to your question, but the standards are voluminous.
If you go back, if you were able to go back to those maps, the colored maps on there, just really quick, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to, just really quick, I'm almost done. This might be the last one.
All right, close it out. Those ones?
Yeah, it works. The one I'm looking at on my right on the monitors, Commissioners, if some of those other pieces of property are acquired by this developer or someone, can this zone be expanded?
Yes.
If it is, okay, if it is expanded, do they have to, would they be required to meet the same guidelines as we're talking about today? So everything looks consistent?
They can be expanded without your consent. So the answer to the question is, if you guys apply the same rules, same consistency to those other properties, if the applicant comes in after acquiring them, then yes, you're not required to, but I would recommend you do.
Commissioners, one of the things for me is that if, however this looks out there, he said something, and having seen it, it's an urban, like an urban environment versus another downtown Ogden, it's a different feel. These types of communities are a different feel than they are coming downtown here. And so, you know, I buy into that, and so. And so I just want to be careful that it doesn't turn, you know, a little patchwork here, so. With that, I think, Madam Chair, you said you're ready. I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the approval for 2025-20 on that rezone for this TZ-Bennett.
And I'll second that with a comment. So this has been a long time coming, and I've supported this development because of what has been promised, put in under the development agreement by the developers. So we're putting a lot of faith into the developers to carry forward and provide what they have said they're going to. And I agree with Commissioner Harvey, I've actually seen kind of the blueprint of this in another state, and for me, it makes good sense to provide a community center in that part of the county. At the same time, Charlie, I would want to make sure that that development agreement is not wavered, that that becomes part of the public record. Because if this was not carried out with what was promised, you know, I almost was ready to table this until we had a consensus, but I'm gonna hold off on that and support the motion with that understanding. But I think we need to make it very clear to the developer that this is not a free pass. This is an opportunity to provide what they have promised Weaver County. And personally, I expect that to happen. And I think that in the future, any development we look at, as we did last week, we expect the same due diligence from the developer, or we may not just pass it, because that's our duty as elected officials to make sure that what we're approving is carried forward by the people developing that property, so. I want to make sure that becomes part of the record.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Harvey, just for clarification, did your motion include the approval of the development agreement? Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-20, Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. All right, item A on our agenda, Commissioners.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries, we're adjourned.